I'm just going to read something that I wrote yesterday. And it says, "Good evening. I'd like to begin with a simple truth. Research shows when neighbors know each other's names, the whole community becomes safer. The health of Allen Park doesn't rest in its laws, but in our relationships. Why don't we pray? Lord, I'm asking for your strength, guidance, and wisdom. I thank you for your leadership and the leadership that flows from you through people. And now today, we ask for your wisdom, and we thank you. Amen."
Amen.
Thank you.
Hey, and if we can now call the agenda. Roll call.
Alrighty, Councilman Wertzbacher. Councilman Lloyd. Councilman Schleck.
President.
Councilman Barr. Councilman Valerius.
Here.
Councilwoman Nick.
Here.
Treasurer Estimer.
President.
And Mayor Gail McLeod.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Lloyd.
Second.
Second by Mr. Wertzbacher.
Through the chair, we are adding a presentation under minutes. And that'll be for the swearing-in of Nathaniel Batko as a new hire police officer.
Duly noted. To the original motion and second, is this acceptable? Thank you. Any other changes? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is carried. We have a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting of August 12th.
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Nick.
Second.
Second by Mr. Barr. Any corrections? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That is carried. Now we have a presentation.
Mayor and council, thank you. We are privileged enough to get this young man, Nathan Batko. He's a resident from Southgate, grew up there, born and raised, was in Detroit for almost two years. Came down looking for better pastures, something closer to what he knew. We were lucky to obtain him. We're very proud. He's in his first week and a half. And Nathan Batko, our newest officer.
Maybe he'll swear you in.
I sort of swear to you in court before, but...
Yes.
Just at the end, say, "I swear I do," or "I affirm," whatever you feel comfortable with.
No problem.
Alright. Face me, raise your right hand, please. Do solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Michigan, and that you will endeavor to secure and maintain an honest and efficient administration of the affairs of the city of Allen Park, free from partisan distinction or control, and that you will perform the duties of full-time police officer to the best of your abilities, so help you God.
I swear.
Congratulations. George, go sign on the paper for your records, and I'll see you around.
Don't let them go anywhere. Don't let them go anywhere.
Stay up here.
We will start with Mr. Estimer.
Thank you for choosing Allen Park. Just need you to stay safe, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Want to say thank you? Support the badge, keep it shiny.
Thank you so much.
Again, thank you for your choice in careers, and thank you for continuing in that career in Allen Park.
Absolutely.
Okay, just want to say welcome to Allen Park, and like we said, stay safe.
Thank you.
I want to just say thank you for coming to Allen Park, like everyone else, and I always say thank you to your family. Because they're the most, more than anyone else. Thank you.
Thank you.
Not much to add, but it's very much appreciated, other than that's a spectacular mustache.
Thank you.
I appreciate you bringing a little style to it. That's very nice, and you probably know you're from the area, but it's a great community, and I appreciate you helping keep it that way. Thank you.
Thank you for coming to Allen Park, and I myself, I'm kind of empty this time.
It definitely took some time.
Looks great, though. Thank you.
Thank you for choosing Allen Park. We very much appreciate it and look forward to having a very long career with us. And with regard to the mustache, the first time I saw it, I thought Chief O'Reilly is going to have a contender for best mustache in Allen Park. So maybe we can get something going here and get a few more of you, and we can have some kind of a fundraiser.
We're going to give the firefighters a run for the money on this one.
Again, welcome, and we are truly blessed to have you. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Glad that he could make it. Hey, we will move on to organizational business, and the first is motion to approve the resolution for standing council committees liaison and delegate assignments. We have a motion.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Lloyd.
Second.
Second by Mr. Wertzbacher. Basically, this is a reiteration of a document that was prepared in 2018 with some refinements, and got rid of a few things that were no longer in existence. And basically it.
And through the chair, I will make the change on, what was it?
It's on the assignments item, the second one.
That will be so noted in the minutes.
Okay, thank you. But on the resolution, there's no names associated with this, just the resolution. Any other comments or questions?
Through the chair.
Yes.
As I said in the study session, I brought up my comments. I'm not going to go into great detail again about them, just based on what we passed in 2018. I believe, hopefully going forward, if this is what we're going to pass and we receive going, that we will notify the public and be transparent about any and all changes of committees, members, and what have you, and any changes to those. And I do believe, based on the documents we've ever received prior, we did not necessarily follow that. So I hope now we will, if this is what we choose to pass. Because I ultimately believe that if we put that in place, we all benefit as a community and as a council. This one and future councils.
For anyone who, well, the documents should be on the city's website, but the standing committees are Community Affairs, Economic Development, Human Resources, Legal Affairs, and Municipal Facilities. The liaison assignments are for council members to serve as liaisons for various city boards and commissions. On two of them, the individual actually does sit on that commission, planning and zoning, and they are voting members, but cannot be officers on those commissions. As far as the Downtown Development Authority, state law indicates that the mayor is a member of that board, so there is no appointment on that. And generally, another council person, usually the mayor pro tempus, is the backup because they are a voting member. A third party can be assigned to attend the DDA meetings, but they would not be voting members if they were not an elected official. The other delegate positions, in case anyone's curious, are the Downriver Community Conference, the Downriver Utility Waste Water Authority, the Downtown Development Authority, which I commented on, and the Southeast Michigan Council of Government, also known as SEMCOG. With regard to the Downriver Utility Waste Water Authority, that Allen Park is one of 13 communities that owns the wastewater treatment facility in Wyandotte, and they like to have mayors sit on that board because that keeps the separation of having people from the technical, financial, or legal subcommittees also sitting on that board. So that's kind of an overview of what the resolution is. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, as approved, and we come to the organizational business. One B, which are assignments that were also outlined. These are the appointments to the standing council committees liaison, delegate positions. And it's noted that there was one change in that Ms. Nick is now the liaison to the Historical Commission in addition to being the liaison to the Festivities Commission. We have a motion, please.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Barr.
Second.
Second by Mr. Wertzbacher. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you. Now we come to the City Treasurer's Report.
Thank you. I just want to make a reminder that this Friday, the last day for taxes to be paid here to the city without penalty, as of the first, and on the first of each month, there'd be a 1% penalty due when you are late with those taxes. So please bring them in this Friday. Also, the back-to-school supply drive, thanks so much to everybody who's donated for that. I really appreciate it. We have about 20 backpacks, so we'll probably stuff the backpacks and split those up between the two school districts. I did initially say that would be collected till September 1st, but since September 1st falls on the Monday that we're not here, we're going to call this on Friday as well. If we do receive some later, I'll just make sure that it's distributed. So summer taxes and the back-to-school supplies are due here to the city offices by Friday, please. Also, I just want to take a second to give special thanks to Angela, Deputy Angela Lovelock and Darlene Swoblen. They have really been huge help with our summer tax season as far as backing up the clerks. And then also, of course, to our clerks, Kristin Zotter, who's been amazing and steady, as well as Sadie Carr and Nicole Hazard, who's new, and she got thrown right in the middle of it here during tax season, and she's doing fantastic. So thanks to the finance clerks and to their backups who have been fantastic. I'm sure I speak for John Lob when I say that. Thank you.
Anyone have any questions? Get those taxes in. Of course, if you have ACH, you don't have to worry about it, right, Tim?
Yeah, it's already done.
Thank you, and we'll move on to the city administrators' operational report.
Good evening. Finance Director John Lob is attending the Michigan Government Finance Officers Association Fall Institute, September 29th through October 1st. We subscribe to this association and attend training courses with them throughout the year. The statewide training is for finance officers to discuss best practices in government, finance, upcoming policy changes, and it also informs for like-minded professionals to share ideas and solutions. During the 2025 Downriver Senior Olympics, Allen Park took home 14 gold medals, four silver medals, and two bronze medals. I'm going to butcher this name, sorry. Michael Claza took four gold medals and one silver medal. He is most decorated senior Olympian for Allen Park with five medals overall. The arena has transitioned to ice and skating programs, which have begun. I wasn't talking about a police officer, but we've seen him. Firefighter Ryan Croft started a fire arson investigation course. This is being paid for by the Downriver Mutual Aid. After he's completed, to my understanding, he will be on an investigation team of Downriver. The DDA car show is on September 4th, from 4:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. on Allen Road between Southfield Road and Roosevelt. By the way, that road will be closed for the car show. The library is currently closed for renovations and will resume regular hours the day after Labor Day on Tuesday, September 2nd. Manor Avenue will be fully open by the end of this week, at which point approaches and sidewalks will be poured. Restoration should be completed within a couple of weeks. Inglewood Road construction from Quant to Park is currently in progress. Work will begin on Jonas following the Labor Day holiday. The Euclid water main installation has been complete. Water main installation on Hanover starts this week. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion to accept and file the administrator's report.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Schleck.
Second.
Second by Mr. Valerius. Any comments or questions? Lots of good news. Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is carried. We now come to public comments. You have five minutes in which to speak. All we want is your name and the street on which you live. Please do not provide your full address. The only other thing that we ask is that you be courteous and civil.
Good evening, City Council, Mayor Ray McGus and Quant. What a very interesting meeting. I think it was one of the best ones I have ever seen in over 20 years coming. There was nothing wrong with it. Don't feel bad what happened. Feel strong. This is what it's all about. This is not a strong mayor-city. This is a weak mayor-city. And no disrespect to you, Mayor. All that means is that the city administrator and the mayor are not one. They're two separate entities. Through our charter, every one of you is supposed to uphold that charter. Every one of you, elected or not elected. Even myself, when I was on a commission, that's what I did. I was up here, I put my arm, my hand up to uphold the Constitution of the United States and our city charter. That's what it's all about. What you have is not easy. It is tough. You have family members, you have families going on, plus you have all this going on. But don't feel bad what happened. And no disrespect to none of you. You are all doing one hell of a job. But with that, I want to say, wow. The roads are unbelievable that are being done. Inglewood looks fantastic. It really looks great. Midway looks great. You hit an area midway that needed a lot of work. And I want to thank every single tax-paying citizen and non-tax-paying citizen in this great city for having a millage that that's the reason why, and that's where the money comes from. It doesn't come from our governor. It doesn't come from our President of the United States. It comes from us, the hard-working citizens of Allen Park. We, the citizens, passed the millage, and it's coming out of my pocket. And I'm glad it's happening. That's what it's all about, people. I also want to thank TNT for doing a fantabulous job of removing, I believe, three trees on Midway. Very, very professional. They had people out there to make sure no one went around them. They cut the trees down. They eliminated everything. They even flattened the area where the trees were. You don't even know the trees were there. They cleaned it up great. I'm not saying nothing about our workers. I'm just saying, I'm here to go ahead and say, "Thank you," whoever did that job. It looks great. It doesn't look like my piece of property is across my street where a tree got removed, or two trees got removed, and there's still two holes there. I don't see what the difference is. I really don't. This is our city. Respect our city. Respect us taxpayers. Follow the ordinance, and I'm going to tell you all something. Thank you for the five minutes, because here's something. This is not Bloomfield Hills. This ain't Southgate. This ain't Lincoln Park. This is Allen Park. We have our own rules. We have our own citizens here that pay our own tax dollars. I couldn't do your job. People ask me, "Hey, Ray, why didn't you go ahead and run for Congress?" I mean, Congress. Okay, they asked me, "Why didn't you not run for the city council?" I go, "I did. I ran away." Because I couldn't do it.
Smart man.
It takes a lot of time. And at my age, I'm going to tell you what, I have no idea how much time we have left in this world. But look at that, five minutes. Thank you very, very, very much. And through the chair, Joe, you're okay. Don't worry. You did what you had to do, okay? Every one of you, have a great day. Every citizen out there, have a great day and enjoy this beautiful weather.
Thank you, Ray.
No one else is coming up. We'll close public comments and move on to the consent agenda. Which tonight consists of claims and accounts in the payroll report. Motion, please.
Motion.
By Mr. Barr.
Second.
Second by Mr. Wertzbacher. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is carried. Move on to resolutions. Resolution one is for the operations and oversight of the city treasurer's office. Motion.
Motion, Mayor.
By Mr. Schleck.
Second.
Second by Ms. Nick. Comments or questions?
I wanted to make one comment that relates to what we were talking about earlier. I know one thing was said that we've never, ever just directly put someone directly on there. I believe that we just recently did that with Ms. Lovelock, when we appointed her as deputy clerk. I think that pretty recent, so I thought it was important to bring that to attention. And that I believe when the treasurer presented this, it's not just he's presenting it for himself. He's not doing this as a self-assact, and I believe what he was fighting for. He's looking at the treasurer's office as a function of government, as a function for the people. He wants to make sure that in the case he or any other future treasurer, once they go away or have a vacation or any emergency, they have someone to back him up. To me, that's logical. I know since Tom, before even he became administrator, we talked about succession planning. This is succession planning. We have to look at these things, look at what disruptions can happen if we don't have that person in place. This isn't about creating unnecessary bureaucracy. It's simply about protecting our taxpayers. And that's one of the biggest jobs we have as council. We're stewards of the charter and stewards of the dollars. So that's my comments.
Any other comments?
To my knowledge, and we had talked about it in the workshop, that we did have this position. It was, and why it was taken away, I still don't know, why nobody filled that position when Maureen became treasurer. But we do need a deputy treasurer, in my belief. And I agree, we had Angela that we voted in, and from everything I've seen, it's worked out beautifully. And she's fit that position, and everything has worked out fine. And considering that our treasurer only works, or is only supposed to work like 10 hours a week, we do need somebody in that office to help when he is not there for the residents' sake. So that's all I have to say.
Any other comments from council?
Through the chair.
Yes.
You know, I want to thank Tim, number one, for taking the time and all the work you did to kind of put together everything that you presented. You know, I don't think anyone up here doubts the need for help. And I am full of agreement with that. The only problem I have is the budgeting for it. That's it. I mean, it's not budgeted currently, and the budget's been set. And I guess the question would be is, where do we get the money to budget for this position? That would be the question that I would ask either our city administrator or our finance director in regards to where are the funds going to come to fund or to budget for this newly created position?
Can we ask the finance director?
Well, let's see if there's any other council members first. Any other council members?
Through the chair. I do have a comment, but Treasurer Estimer, if he...
Thank you. Yeah, just generally speaking, when there's a resolution, usually the person who brings the resolution speaks to it, so maybe I could help answer a few questions. So the resolution asks for council approval of a deputy treasurer position to ensure continuity and compliance with the treasurer's office, which we've been speaking about. The city charter, Section 16.02B, defines a treasurer as a full-time officer entitled to support and benefits, as with other full-time roles. Currently, the treasurer's office has zero staff, no deputy, no backup. A deputy is critical to cover statutory duties in my absence, maintain uninterrupted collections, and strengthen internal controls. When I took this office, the previous treasurer left the office without even really going in and sitting at the desk. I walked into about 150 emails, 100 voicemails, that we had to sit and go through each one of them. Just even in a normal transition, it could be a couple of weeks before a new treasurer might come into the office, and then you inherit a winter tax season that you have no idea how to do. So having a treasurer or a deputy that knows that process really helps everybody. It helps the citizens, and it helps the staff here. The nominee that I presented to you has three years of direct experience in this office. I didn't pick her, the mayor said, because she's nice. I picked her because she has experience. She's been doing this for three years. She knows my job. She knows exactly what to do, for the most part. She's been through a summer tax season. I mean, granted, you've got to go through a few of them, but she's got the chops. I've been in human resources. I've been in retail management my whole life. I've been hiring people for different jobs my whole life. I know what I'm doing. I know when I see talent. You obviously may see something different. I'm not sure this is the first time I've ever heard anything in opposition. This resolution isn't about adding overhead. It's about protecting residents, ensuring compliance, and giving the treasurer's office the structure the charter envisions. And yes, I did request to speak to Mr. Lob, and he did identify where those funds might come from, which would be something out of maybe the capital improvement plan, you know, a budget. So $45,000 approximately, probably less after we get done with it. But that's sort of where he indicated to me that the funds would be there.
Point of information, we do collect a 1% administrative fee that we charge our citizens for the collection of taxes. If I'm so...
I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Through the chair.
Yes.
I agree wholeheartedly. I think that Treasurer Estimer makes some very impressive points, and I agree that the treasurer's office needs this for the continuity of government. That's something, again, Councilman Valerius alluded to. I think that we're all in agreeance of that. My one desire as a member of council is that this position, and I know that we've had it in the past, but it has fallen out of disuse, that be something that is worked with the rest of our administrative team to create that position. That's my one big desire. We pay Mr. Murray and Mr. Lob and most highlighted salaries to do a certain job. And my concern is cutting them out of the process and as to creating these things and going to the budget. And I know that when it comes time to budget time, Tom and John, and I know that they were both transitioning in when we were doing it, which was probably crazy and hectic and all the things that go with that, but spent a tremendous amount of time going through and trying to figure out where this budget goes. And so it doesn't seem it's as easy as just, like, you know, finding the money. Again, I... Again, I, I also respect that the, that this is a pressing question, and that's also, that point has been made clear. I am just concerned with going outside of our traditional process of creating the budget to doing that. I, I think that anything that we do should involve Treasurer Estimer, Mr. Murray, Mr. Lob, Ms. Whitehead sitting down and thinking about, how does this fit into the larger framework of our budget? How does this fit into the larger framework of how it is that we do this, run a city? And I mean, and, and just because I know that we've, you've talked about this as far as precedent, and I would be, if, if Mr. Mizzi, or Clerk Mizzi could, when, when we, when we went through the process of partnering Angela, that was something that we've worked with, the current city administrator? Is that, that's okay? Not you, not, not you, I'm sorry.
With the city administrator at the time, right. And, and, and the memo came from Mr. Kibbe to council.
That, that's my, and that's my only, if that's the case.
Well, and that's, and it was always traditionally, they recommend that the elected officer, because when you leave that office in charge, that's your name. I mean, I know, like, a lot of employees don't understand, but you guys do, that your name is all you have. So if you're gonna have someone do... It took me 12 years to pick Angela. That's how picky I was. Because that's my, my name's all I have. So, and, and I'm just gonna say, everything you do is just, I, I know you want to get procedures, but you have every power. That's why our charter's written that way, to do it on just the recommendation of the mayor and the co, the council. Yep. So committee, no committee, I, I don't read that, but I wasn't asked that, and I'm sorry.
Any other comments from council?
I, to the chair. I, I echo what Matt says, because my background, that was my, my, one of my primary concerns, did, you know, did we go through the proper procedure of not only respect, but not trying to undermine anybody? That it went through our, our city manager, it went through the mayor, it went through our finance director. Those are the steps that I think all of us on council should be looking at. That we know that what goes on in that office over there is running like, like it should, like a well-oiled machine. And, and it goes through the steps before anything gets put in front of us. I, I think if you were a, a general manager, district manager, whatever, if you went into one of your stores that you oversaw, you wouldn't want an assistant manager or trainee running up to you and saying, hey, I want to do this. Well, if you went ahead and, and okayed that, you're undermining the store manager. That's his ship. I'm looking to see everybody working in unison, everybody on the same page. That we all, that we all walk away from the table and we have the answers, the proper answers. And that's what I'm looking for. And I don't think it's out of reason. That's what we should be doing. Yeah, we're not gonna agree on everything like Mr. McGusson said, but that's what we should be doing. And, and yes, I did like that heated part. It got a little bit emotional. And it did. We care.
May I respond?
Mr. Barr, I think last...
Just quickly. I spoke to Ed, Councilman, sorry, I spoke to you prior to this, I spoke to Tom after. I agreed that the, the last time doing it was maybe a little bit, I didn't know the process. Mr. Mizzi, is there a process for, is there a process in writing to do this? Do we have a process at the city to do this? There's not, just to save you the trouble of looking. There's no process written down anywhere. There's no process to do this. So when I did this, I learned from that. I put together a pretty thick packet of answer, every question that you asked me, I've answered. Every question that Tom asked me, I answered. I met with the two city officials, the one that controls the money and the one that controls the, the, the HR department, and I ran the, the stuff by them. So I thought that I was doing things right. I didn't come here tonight thinking that this was gonna be a problem. There was no indication to me that this would be a problem until Thursday night. And that was by one person. And that's it. I haven't talked, it's been two weeks. I thought if the last council meeting, we were gonna just, you know, it would be done in two weeks. That was where I thought this was left. And so I did my homework, but not one member of council, not one member of, member of administration has talked to me about this in the past two weeks. So what's the process? Nobody's clued me on on it. I had to do it myself. That's all I'm saying.
My suggestion when I spoke with you was that the first, one of the first things I asked you, have you spoken to the mayor? Have you talked to the city?
And I did, right after you mentioned it.
Yes, and, and you did. And thank you for, you know, for following through on that. Nobody here denies, and let alone myself, that you don't, you need help, okay, in that office. But we just want to make sure that there's a structure later on down the road that there's, that there's a structure in place.
Just helping, trying to create that structure.
So, through the chair.
Yes.
So with the conversations had with John, I can ask you, so the, the, the funds, the $45,162 a year added to the city budget that currently isn't in the budget, where specifically is that going to come from?
So there, there's gonna be some moving parts, you know, if it were to be approved, because in this was Tim overseeing the cashiers, and those cashiers are in my budget. So there would need to be at least a budget amendment to cover those employees to move to the treasurer's office. Now, that's all the money I have in my budget to be moved, so the rest would have to come from fund balance or somewhere else.
But we don't know where it's coming from.
At this moment, I mean, we're early in the budget, so, you know, we don't have to make any budget amendments, but at the end of the year, that budget will be short. So we would have to pull the money from somewhere. Right now, if we made that budget amendment today, we'd pull it from fund balance, because I don't think we'd be able to tell where every account is going to end up at the end of the year. Where we're gonna be over, where we're gonna be under. It's just too early right now to tell that. But, I hope that answers that question.
Specifically to the employees, when I said the $45,000, it would go down from there is because we've discussed ideas where if we had a full-time person, we wouldn't need one of the part-time staff. So I mean, that opens up a chunk of change that would trim that down. So John and I have been talking about it and trying to look at creative ways. Some of the training dollars perhaps won't need to be down there, so off of my budget. So that's not the end of it. That's the max, 45. It would go down from there.
And as far as the capital improvement, you know, that is probably one of our largest buckets of money that is more discretionary than anything else in our budget. And I'm not saying that's where we would pull it from this year. We're transferring money from general fund to our capital improvement fund, you know, annually to cover a lot of those costs. But, you know, going into the next budget, that's the first thought, is that's where we would have maybe some extra money potentially, or we would have to reduce what our capital plan is for the following years. But we just, we have our five-year plan right now, but that changes mid-year also, so...
So it is possible.
There's, there's ways, it's just where are you gonna pull the money from and what are we not gonna do, I guess, to do that in terms of capital? Or can we do that in a year? I don't know the, we're still early in this budget.
But you made the statement, you know, where are you gonna pull it from and what don't we do? And so, again, getting back to conversation that we had, the recommendation was to put this into next year's fiscal year budget where you could actually do planning for it. Is that correct?
There was a, there, when Tim and I talked, he shared what his proposal was and asked me to kind of check the numbers, so I did that. And I also said, well, here's, here's, you know, a recommendation...
Couple different scenarios, yeah.
Yeah, we had a scenario where, you know, we could keep some of the staff. We have one staff, staff member that's going to be leaving at the end of September, replacing that staff member, having a seasonal potentially, and we would have a minimum impact to the budget for this fiscal year. But I don't know, you know, it's, it's up in the air on whether that person would be a dedicated deputy for the remainder of the year or not. But there was a pathway to at least get help or, but, you know, it was, you know, there was a strong push for the full-time employee for that.
And, and it's, the next fiscal budget is next June or July when we're, when we're putting that together.
July 1st.
Okay, I'm saying though, it doesn't impact this department until next July. We can't wait till next July. That's two tax seasons from now. That's the, that's why I had, we, we had talked about the, you know, what would it look like to do it right now?
Mr. Barr.
Through the chair. Sorry, no problem. We have had a deputy treasurer in the past, right? Okay, we can all say that.
Twenty years, twenty years ago.
My question was, is, has that position legally been deleted? Or is it still on the books, or what? Because that's where we gotta first come up to dust off, you know, on the position description. If it has not been, you know, pulled totally, if it's still wherever, either in the charter or wherever, if it's not been, like I said, pulled, that's where we have to start, correct?
And through the chair to answer Councilman Barr's question, when they just let it lapse, it doesn't get rid of the position, because the charter states there shall be deputy officers with the same power as, so whenever he's not here or she, the deputy has the power. Sign things, approve things. But yeah, it's, it's just like you can create a job right now, tonight. You could create one just like that if you wanted. You have that power. So now the details, okay, Jim, bite you in the bottom, but it...
And if I can, through Mr. Barr, the, I did assemble a job description. You have to remember that even though we've had one of this 20 years ago, that was when we had a full-time treasurer, so the job duties are different. The job duties would change. They would take on more time, because I'm, they're here 30 hours more than I am, so they take on a little bit more responsibility. They'd still be watching the window and that type of thing. But every single thing that I put on this job description, the candidate that I bring before you today knows how to do every single one of them. Maybe not fluently yet, I've been exposed to them, but she knows how to do all of them. In fact, I derived this list from her list that she presented Mr. Lob with, things that she currently does that she feels is sort of above and beyond what she normally, you know, the rest of the clerks don't do. So I've included that in the job description as well as specific things that would help the department. Thank you.
Okay. That's what I wanted to know.
And that's within your package.
Yes.
Not official though, it says draft on it, because the HR department hasn't, it hasn't been vetted completely with HR department.
I, I do have a couple of questions. I don't recall, and I've read the charter over and over again, I don't recall that it specifies anything about deputies in there, but that may be. I think that a position that has been vacant for over 20 years needs to have an updated job description that's more, not one that's, is a list of this, these are the tasks that I perform, but what are the expectations and the duties when we're looking at that type of position? It was very clear with the deputy clerk. That was very well-defined, and we had a very strong candidate on that. We need a job, I've had written some notes, we need a job description, we need to approve that this is a valid position. There are things that can be done, I think, to assist the treasurer's office at this point, because, yeah, it does get hectic. I know that his predecessor, for whatever reason, which we could never discern, would print off the tax statements here on our printer in the financial and then stuff the envelopes, so one had to question why that was going on. I do think, however, I have some concerns with regard to pre-selecting an individual. I know that we've had individuals here, Angela would have been here for the same amount of time. Right now, we have a, a new hire who in fact is being trained by a cashier or clerk who has not been here as long. So this raises some questions in my mind as to, you know, what we are doing and why we are doing it. Again, when I'm, when Tim got to me after he sent out his first packet, and it wasn't until after Mr. Wurtzbacker had asked if he had spoken to me, I indicated, I indicated that Mr. Estimer raised some very valid points. We did need to look at the structure of the treasurer's office and the cashiers and who was doing what. However, that's, that's my feeling on this, is that we need a better job description, and I would like to have a better idea of candidates and other candidates. Because I have, unfortunately, I have reservations. And that's my statement. Are there any other individuals who would like to comment?
So my understanding is that the HR department has been working on a, because I talked to her on Friday night, and she has been working on a job description for that. So it does sound like everybody has been talking about it. There seems to have been several meetings and with the mayor with the...
And they are working on it. But what I'm saying is, we don't have a defined, you know, we've got one that's been being worked on here, we've got one that's being worked on by HR. We don't have what we need.
So have you guys ever all come together and talked? Because it seems like this one's having this meeting, this one's having this meeting.
Not that included me.
You know, it just seems like maybe everybody needs to get together and discuss this. There obviously is a need for help in the treasurer's office. We all agreed on that. You can make amendments to the agenda, or to the budget. It happens all the time, okay? So, and like he, like, he said, we're early in our budget, so we can pull money from other places, okay? I'm listening to Mr. Mizzi, and he's saying that according to the charter and everything, we don't need to go and have applications and interviews and that the treasurer can, can recommend, like he recommended. So I'm just like trying to put all the pieces together, because I was not informed, I mean, on all this, I did receive things, but it just seems like there were other meetings. So I'm trying to put everything together and see what's best for our citizens and for the city.
And that's, that's exactly what I'm trying to do too, through the chair. And that, again, I mean, I like more specifics in regards to, I know amendments are made to the budget all the time, but we have more specifics. We know where they're coming from, we know where the money is moving. But we're asking, we're asking to approve something that the hopes is that we could move things around to pay for it, which I'm not comfortable with, really. I mean, if we had something in place saying, this is going to come from this right now, if approved, this, this will be moved here, it's gonna be all paid for, no problem, then, then I would be a lot more comfortable with it. But we're still talking about the possibility, okay, this might be an option. This could, this could happen, which, you know, we're messing with a, a set budget. So, you know, I'd like, I'd like those questions answered, you know, in more specifics in regards to the money that we've asked, that we've told the citizens that we're spending. That's already been established.
Yeah, and, and, you know, a lot of times when people are having discussions, it's, well, we could do this, we could do that, but it's not, nothing that's concrete at this point. And again, there are things where I've, there are observations and other information which I am concerned for Tim, because I want to see Tim in the best light. And I don't want to see Tim in a position where he is not going to be in that best light. And I would rather not go into it at this point. I would be very happy to sit and meet with people, but I have concerns and I have reservations. And I think they are well-founded.
Through the chair.
Yes.
I think that this brings us back to the question that Mayor Protem Nick brought up in the work session, as, so what do we do now? What, what is it that we're gonna vote on today? I think Mr. Lob and Treasurer Estimer, they, they said something that piqued my interest in that you guys came up with multiple scenarios, and that seems interesting to me, like, because... to me, like because I would like to kind of like see what those other scenarios are. Um, I, uh, because like clearly, like, I, I know that there's ways to be creative in, in your budgeting. And, and to, to your point, like that could involve, you know, hiring somebody on or part-time or seasonal work or whatever that may be. So, a, and I, and I, and I ask this because I don't want to, I don't want to just go to this and do a simple up or down vote and see it fail and then that's, that's, doesn't seem to benefit anybody. So, and, and I, and I don't, and, and again, I don't mean this, like, again, is it, is it reasonable, and I'm asking, I'm asking Treasurer S. Heimer this, is it, is it reasonable to like, to, to make this a study session conversation, to talk about what those, what those scenarios are and, and to like what works for your office, what work, like what are the possible solutions to Councilman Valerius's point? We can get into the more fine details of where those money, um, that money is coming from. Is, is that amenable to you? I know that, I know that you're in the midst of tax season right now and that you, that the office needs it now. I, I a hundred percent respect that.
To answer your question, uh, with respect to council, you do an important job with every two weeks, right? You have to come here and make some hard decisions sometimes. The rest of this world goes on, 14 days in a row. I'll repeat it. I left the last meeting thinking that this was going to be handled today. I answered every question that was asked of me. I've had zero input from anybody in this building on this. Nobody's came to me and said, Tim, you know, let's look at this now, we'd like to get on the next agenda, or we can't get it on the next agenda. Zero conversations. The conversations that the mayor's having tonight with me or with you, first time I've heard any of that. First time. No reservation she's ever showed me before about what she was talking about. Um, so I come here tonight confused, uh, as to, I did the preparation for this, I'm the one that did the packet, um, with a lot of the things, uh, uh, Councilman Wurtzbacker asked me as well as, um, the city administrator. I put together all the questions that I knew that you all needed and I thought that I came up with an, you know, it's a budget that's already been passed. So when, when you put together a budget, you expend every dollar on purpose. You don't leave money necessarily on the table. So obviously, if we're going to make a change into the budget, it has to come from somewhere.
Right.
Um, so this department can't run with somebody that's working 10 hours a week and that's how it's going to be going forward. I can't work the 40 hours anymore. It's going to be 10 hours a week. So the reason it's so urgent that we get this done is because there's going to be huge gaps in service and there's going to be major issues if we can't get the treasurer's jobs done within 10 hours. And I'm not the one that made this a part-time position. These all should have, this, this stuff should all been up, been brought up when, when that happened. And there was a few of you here that did that. So I'm not sure what the, what the previous treasurer was doing or why this happened. I'm not sure, but it's not working. I've done this for a year and a half and I could tell you it is not working. It can't work on 10 hours a week, period. I mean, if you want to see a big car wreck, then we can vote this down tonight. When I say we, I say you.
I understand.
I will make one comment, um, about my reservations. It may have been the first time that you heard it from me, but I believe that you have had conversations.
We do have a candidate in the room, so be nice.
I understand and that's what I'm trying to do, sir. And I believe that there have been other conversations.
Can we still table this?
It can be tabled, I believe.
Because there's a few, two things in the job description. Tim, it's not, nothing against you, I, I know.
This is a dra, this is a draft job description.
Yeah, this is a draft.
That I sent to HR to review and she's in the process of doing that. So I just put in your packet as something that I'm working on.
Because we do need to keep it neutral.
Sure.
On, you know, because we've got the pronouns in here.
Yeah, that's why I asked her to, uh, look it over and, um, she's, she reported back to me on Thursday that she's actively working on that.
Okay.
I hope I'm not putting words in her mouth.
And in the resolution that you had written.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we just need to keep it neutral again and the appointment needs to be separate, as a separate resolution.
I'm open to any type of resolution.
Okay.
You know, I, I don't even know if that's normally something that's done, I included it, um, just, just to be, uh, to make it easier, but if, 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 you know, I'd be amenable to anything that, if you wanted to change the structure of that, if I did something incorrectly.
And, and, and I understand where you're coming from. You and I both operated businesses. I come from a government background too, so I understand where we're coming from on all this. And sometimes you just need a second person, like you, you go into the HR, you know, to look at it.
Oh, yeah. I would have loved to help putting this together.
Yeah. That's it.
And if you do put something on the table, according to Robert's rules, please place it on the table for a timeframe, don't let it die.
So is there anything we can do in the meantime as council, make some type of resolution to help the treasurer's office? Can we move one clerk?
Well, I, I think that there's a possibility, quite, I think that we could probably wait till September 2nd to kind of flesh some of this out because that is one of the things I think that is critical and that needs to be looked at. And that's an obvious, that's an obvious, yeah. Um, if someone wants to make a motion to table?
Point of information, just, just, so, um, Clerk Mizzi, just fresh my, can, is that something you can do is to stipulate on the table until the meeting of September 9th? I mean, is that, or, uh, there has to be another motion to bring it off the table either way?
We haven't done it in a while, but yeah, you, you, in, in Robert's rules, you, you should set a date or send it to a committee for discussion? Whether the argument is because I, I still think you need to remove that from the table.
So.
So you need a motion and a support.
So we could make, so the motion to like, instead of a committee, to be considered by council at their next work session of September 7th and to be considered at the next regular meeting of September 9th? That could be the language, that would accompany that?
Yeah, I mean, you don't even have to say, place it on the table, you can just say, we refer this to.
Perfect.
I mean, because really, the table's where things go to die.
Die, yeah. So.
This, this isn't going to die.
Right.
Mr. Clerk, though, if I may say though, I was the one that made the resolution and we have a second one too. Wouldn't that first have to be, we send it in order to any of that to happen? I mean, can't just.
Yes.
Let out.
Call the vote.
You know what the official motion is.
Motion is right.
Like to discuss the topic.
And there was very low detail, so.
There's, yeah, there's no detail.
No, the resolution, I supported the resolution for the over-operations oversight of the treasurer's office. I supported that resolution.
Well, through discussion and debate, you can change it, you just got to get.
Yeah, but I was even asked if I wanted to change or anything of that sort and based on what I'm understanding and at least what I'm hearing, I'm willing to, open to that change, but I just don't want to say, hey, let's put it on the table without even talking that through. I mean, just to, say, oh, let's just put it on the table without disregarding what we did. I mean, that right there, we're missing a critical step.
Well, Mr. Mizzi, um, do you have direction on that or should we?
Well, I would handle it a couple ways. Do you want to withdraw your motion?
I do not at this point. I would, I would amend it, but I do not want to withdraw.
Amended to refer to the work session?
No, I would amend that we at least agree that we need a, um, deputy treasurer position to make sure that is something there. I would amend it.
I'm, I'm hearing a couple of things here. Mr. Barr indicated that he felt tabling it would be the most effective approach. Um, I'm.
I disagree with that, so I asked if it can be tabled, that's all you asked.
Yeah.
As of now, personally, if that's the case, I would not want to withdraw, I would keep my same resolution, uh, or keep the, my support for the motion as it is. I wouldn't want to table it without any changes or amending what we have currently in front of us.
But I think if you tabled it, you wouldn't amend what you're looking at.
Well, but I, I believe to his point is, he made a motion, it was seconded, and we haven't taken any action.
Exactly.
So maybe the other thing is you vote on it and then once, if it's voted down, someone can make another motion.
What, what is the current motion?
Well.
Current motion is the resolution as it stands.
Yeah, it was a resolution for the operation oversight of city tre, treasurer's office. There wasn't much detail in it, but, right?
Again, agenda is in a form, that's just the title of the item.
Correct.
There is an actual resolution, I believe the treasurer provided in detail.
But the whereas is?
Well, he didn't really read it.
In the packet.
Well, anyway, the, the idea would be you vote on it, there was a motion second, you vote on it, if it goes down, then some of the citizens. For another day.
Through the chair.
Yes.
If, if we're going to just do a straight vote on this, then I, and then I just would like to make one final comment. Um, I know that, I know that two weeks may seem like a long time and that's the first that, I, I first heard of this, I, I am a little over two weeks ago. Uh, in government it is a blink of an eye. It's not, it's, I mean, that is a blink of an eye. It is no time. Um, and so I, I, again, I, I am, I am, feel very unfortunate that we're in this situation where we, we feel that we have this catastrophic situation ahead of us, whether we act on this or not, but just, just two weeks to, to do the work that goes into this and I, I mean, through, we, we have a draft of a job description. We're, and I, I, I just can't, I can't see voting in favor of something that is not finalized. I understand that we can come back later and change the language and put in what the final version is, but if we don't actually have like the finalized version, I think I would be doing a discredit to our constituents to just say, okay, and then, you know, what, whatever comes, comes of it after that. So I, I'm, I would much prefer to refer this because I think it's essential that we do it and I would, and I hope that we, and I, and again, if we refer it and we say that we're going to talk about it out of the work session, then that is now something that we have voted on and resolved as council to do. And I would far, far prefer that, but if, if we have to vote on it now, then two weeks is not enough time to create something out of thin air. And that is, and, and I, again, I respect all the work that, um, Treasurer S. Heimer has done to make this position out of thin air. A great deal of work and not just the work of physically putting the words on the paper, but of talking to people and, and I know, I know that he, we, we talked for over 45 minutes and I know that that's not the only conversation he did. He has put a ton of work into this. However, there is a lot more work that needs to be done to finalize it and so I would much rather we refer it, but if, if we do not, then.
So through the chair.
Go ahead.
I was, I was going to ask, so you're talking about two weeks. Now, I'm wondering the same thing you are, Dan. Can this all come together in two weeks? Can you guys as a group get together, come up with the job description? Is two weeks enough time? I just don't want to see this keep getting pushed down the road, you know?
So it'd be a month at that point, another.
Yeah, so another month and meanwhile, you know, everything's suffering. So what I'm asking, I guess, the HR committee and, and the treasurer and the city administrator, can you guys come, and the, sorry, finance too, can you guys come together and in two weeks come up with something that's more concrete so then we can vote on it? I see a shaking of the head. How about everybody else here?
Got it. Okay, um, I definitely can assist, uh, in, in, uh, we've already been reviewing the job description and I definitely can get something very settled to have reviewed for whatever that looks like.
Are we talking, um, that's a good point, are we talking for review at the study session, which would be September 2nd, which is a week from now? Or, or is this something that we need to discuss at the study session, but it won't come to the September 9th meeting, but maybe needs to be pushed? Because you're right, we don't want to be going back and forth having the same similar discussion. We, we do need something solid, we need something solid. So the question is, is this something that we'd be able to look at on the second?
Yes, I can get something for you.
And is, and if I'm looking at finance and everybody else, is the ninth too aggressive or should we be a little more conservative and look at the second meeting in September? That's my only question because again, Ms. Nick made a, a valid point. You know, we don't want to just keep coming back and, and beating the same dead horse.
For my part, I can, I can make whatever deadline you tell me. So as, as far as the job description, the money side, the staffing, those questions, that's something more involved.
Okay, so we could possibly have something that with all parties involved at the September 2nd study session.
Well, shaking of the head, yes, I see.
So, so that, so that.
Sounds like we can do that.
So that way questions get, can get answered and addressed and.
Yes.
Yeah.
I, I would say, if I'm allowed to interject, that if we can all get in the room at one time.
Agreed.
Not the council mayor, I apologize, um, the parties you're asking and just get this done tomorrow or Friday at one time, instead of go to this office, go to that office, go to this office. I think if we all sat down, this could be done.
If you're including me, that'd be fantastic. Every time I walk by an office, the door closes, so I just, I'd like to be a part of the conversation, that's all.
It hasn't been about this, well, my door's been closed, it's been about other things. We have, as you see, closed session for other items. But what I'm getting at is, I know for a fact, all of us can hash this out together as one team and that's what needs to be done and I think it would be a lot easier to vote. I personally am not opposed to it, just haven't been talked too much about it.
I mean, that's what I'm seeing, maybe at the work session like we're saying, something more concrete than.
So my suggestion is for finance, HR, myself, Tim. That's probably, uh, for now, need to have a meeting either tomorrow or Friday and set a time and sit down and make that time.
May I request tomorrow? If, if everyone's available.
If tomorrow Tim has time.
I like that, sooner than a pattern.
I can make John.
Send, send me an email invite.
Okay.
I, uh, my, my schedule will be, I can, I can do anything this week and next week and then, um, my schedule changes.
Gotcha.
I won't be available on Tuesday council meetings.
Is there any, even?
Probably.
Is there any specific times tomorrow that you may be available more than not?
Uh, no, I'm available, your normal work hours.
After council meeting tonight, I will send out an invite for all to attend tomorrow. Is that satisfactory?
Well, before we do that, uh, we need to change the resolution. We have, the resolution's still on the table, so we have to agree that, that we're going to amend this resolution to state what it says and that we are going to agree that administrative staff will come together to, hold on.
Well, I was going to ask the clerk.
We can't just.
What's his recommendation?
Yeah. Okay, go ahead. It's, uh, administrative staff to come together to look at, analyze and find the, the, the position of deputy treasurer. Is there anything more of that?
Through, through the chair, um, I think the easiest way, are you looking, um, for point of clarification? We're going off the four resolution, the deputy treasurer position, correct?
Correct. All the, all the resolutions, yeah, yes.
But, um, I've heard everything you've wanted, um.
I would say.
What would you like? Are you adopting all these resolutions, Councilman?
Well, I would amend it to, if we want to, to change it to just one resolution to, uh, where, oh, yeah, whereas is.
Well.
That we want to discover the logic rationale to.
Wait, wait, wait a minute, what are we doing here? When you say amending, are we, I got the impression you were not doing this, the focus.
Well, the resolution is on the table, that's what we have to do. We can't just say as much as everyone it seems an agreement that we're going, all the administration wants to come to the table to vote on it. That's fine, but I want, we have to agree.
Well, okay, we, we had, we had a, yeah.
Because right now I'm not going to withdraw the resolution unless we have that, something set in stone, where the resolution states what we're going to be, what it's going to be doing.
What's the best way to do this?
Well, we have, we have this, can I just make, ask maybe kind of a rhetorical question? We had a resolution for the operation oversight of city treasurer's office. There was a motion and there was a second. There was a lot of discussion, there's been no vote. There was a lot of discussion, there's been no vote on it. What we have come to the conclusion is that it needs clarification. So, we, we really can't vote on this resolution as, as proposed because everyone has misgivings, concerns, and, and acknowledgement, and agreement that there needs to be clarification and, and, uh, discussion, and, 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 and something created that is not a draft or, or ambiguous. And so, I, I'm not, well, how do we get there?
We just say, because this is an agenda item and you, you made the motion and support...
Therefore...
Because there was interpretation, I did it specifically that way. I recommend that, you know, um, you, um... A motion to support, you amend it to say...
Yeah.
That you, um, that this, this item will be sent to the administrative sta- staff at a certain point. And it should be, it, this, this item should come back to the yada, yada meeting.
Sounds good to me.
Okay.
That's my point, I wanted to make sure it's amendment, the point, not just say dismiss it and remove it altogether.
First administrative staff being considered by council at the work session of the second and the regular session of the night.
And then back on the council agenda to...
And that would be the study session, not to be confused with the work session that precedes.
So, it was the night?
Study session on, on the second.
And something like that, you don't have to go over semantics because everybody heard what happened.
Well, I...
So, we're good. Yes.
Well, and the other one thing I would wanna bring up to, uh, respect to the candidate that's in the room too, to say formally that we can't go out of our way in saying that we've never had anyone that we just brought up in the agenda. That's clearly, I mean, we had there, I know I processed through, but we, with Ms. Lovlak, was literally in the packet of who, uh, the clerk wanted. We looked at it, we agreed to it. To say that we don't even wanna consider that person, I think would be ill-conceived as well.
There's even a more recent...
No, I'm not saying that.
It's my understanding that there's misgivings on candidates, that's how I interpret it.
Yeah. Mike, maybe it'd be helpful if you read that back?
Yes, please do.
Okay, I got a, a motion and what we're putting together here, but Councilman Schleck by Pro Tem Nick, that administration, uh, administrative staff shall meet and finalize details... Ah, I ran out of room. Of, for, for the operations and oversight of the ci- city... For the operations and oversight of the ci- city treasurer's office. I mean, it's really, you're, you're not a, you're not creating anything. This is just a, you're basically sending everything in that packet to be finalized. If it is gonna be finalized and will be cleaned up and brought to you to be voted on as a whole. And it might not come back the same way either.
Right, the only other thing I would want to add is, especially to say, the administrative staff and city minis, uh, the city treasurer too, because I know in the past, we've distinguished the difference between administrator and the treasurer. We wanna make sure the treasurer will be part of this process and put that in the resolution.
Administrative staff...
And city treasurer.
And city treasurer... Shall meet and finalize details for the operations and oversight of the city treasurer's office. All right, I have a motion by Councilman Schleck, supported by Mrs. Nick. Mrs. Mayor, would you call the vote?
Yes, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, resolution as amended is approved. Resolution two, to approve the outdoor event application for the Streetery Summer Farewell Vendor Fair Event to be held in their parking lot on Saturday, September twentieth, twenty twenty-five, from eleven AM to ten PM, with an eighty-five dollar fee and final approval from the building department. Motion.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Lloyd, second by Mr. Wirtzbacher. Mr. Baker?
Kind of, kind of a bittersweet, uh, event here, right? Because it's labeled as, uh, summer farewell, but it should be a good time.
Oh, it's not. Great, great title, great title, great event.
So, this is a, a proposal by the Streetery, um, for, um, September twentieth. They wanna do a farmer's market type event in their parking lot. Um, so, and this one will be, uh, laid out in a similar fashion. We'll talk about the next resolution, it's a little bit different layout as far as what they're closing the parking lot. But, um, so it's just be craft vendors, and I'm sure they're gonna offer, um, their food product to anybody that wants to visit the, the event.
Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, resolution is approved. Resolution three is to approve the outdoor event application for the Streetery Second Annual Chili Cook-Off Event to be held in their parking lot on Saturday, October eleventh, twenty twenty-five, from eleven AM to ten PM, with an eighty-five dollar fee and final approval from the building department. Motion, please.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Lloyd.
Second.
Second by Mr. Wirtzbacher. Baker?
So, this event, obviously it says second annual, so the first, uh, last year was their first event, and it's a huge success. So, they wanted to bring it back and do it again. And I believe they, they have, uh, more commitments as far as participants, um, that will be cooking chili. And, uh, they're gonna have a contest again for prizes. And I don't know if anybody's been contacted as far as judges, but it's gonna be, uh, similar to what they did last year. It also, um, they do a fundraiser for, uh, animal shelter, so, and, uh, for adoptions. So, they will be there as well. Um, that's why they're closing off more of the parking lot, because, um, the adoption portion of, uh, the fundraising. And this will be October eleventh, eleven AM to twelve, uh, ten PM.
Any comments or questions?
Uh, not for the mayor, uh, for Matt, but just will the fire department have an entry this year? No, oh, yeah, too much going on, yeah, next year.
They got no kitchen.
No kitchen.
I do wanna say, through the chair, as a participant, last year as a judge, and being there, I thought it was a well-read event. I saw a lot of members of the community and, uh, outside of selfishly pull from the delicious chilis. I believe that this event, by all indications, will be of even a greater success, so I'm definitely in favor. And I'm not, as far as I know, as a judge or anything, again, just support community activism like this.
I think, uh, as Misside, uh, because you were there last year, I think even nicer is the fact that they open it up to other Allen Park businesses. So, they're kind of, you know, working together with some of their possible competitors. But I think it, it breeds a really great atmosphere within the city. It's a nice thing to see, so, yeah.
Agreed.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, resolution is approved. Resolution four is to authorize the signing of the settlement documents related to the national opioid settlement. Motion, please.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Barr.
Second.
Second by Ms. Nick. Um, this is, I think, one of the last settlements, um, related to the opioid lawsuit?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, do you like to fill us in on this?
Uh, you know, unfortunately, someone, well, not unfortunately, but someone else may...
Sandal this, and, uh, but the recommendation is that we, uh, we approve this.
Yeah, it's a, it's one of, I think this must, I think this is about the fourth one.
Yeah.
Um, and I believe that funds need, uh, are, uh, restricted as far as where they can be spent.
That's exactly what I was gonna say, and there's always a debate on where, where they could be spent, so, uh, but it's still good to have the money.
Yes, okay.
So, so what this is in regards to is the opioid crisis that we had here in America and still continue to have. And some of these pharmaceutical companies are now coming to the table with the states, the federal government, and likewise, settling on class action suits. And with those, some cities, most, all cities that could be affected are welcome to join after the settlement process. So, we actually have in the packet a dollar amount proximity of what we could receive over a period of time. As, uh, our attorney stated, this is very, it can only be spent in certain areas. And typically, that is in teaching people about opioids, helping people with opioid crisis, um, things in that regard. This is not money that the city can spend just to spend on something it wants or to do. Um, some of the things we've talked about have been in help with the Guidance Center. That's a organization that the city and many of the Downriver communities joined along with, and they do counseling. So, we could then help them with some payments out of this funding to do such. I hope that helped, give you some ideas.
And this, and this is from Purdue Pharma, so...
Through the chair, this settlement is designed to go and help people that have been impacted by the opioid crisis. It's just, it's the, the logistics of being able, because it's been so wide-reaching as to who it's affected and where it's hit people, that this is the best way of trying to get those funds into those people's hands.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, resolution is approved. Resolution five is to authorize the Allen Park Fire Department and City of Allen Park to extend our current agreement with the William D. Ford Fire Academy to twenty thirty. Motion, please.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Schleck.
Second.
Second by everybody. Um, Mr. Valerius, thank you, Mr. Barr.
You're welcome.
Um, Chief O'Reilly.
Good evening, everyone.
The other handlebar, I must say.
The original, the original.
The original, that's right. And we will always remember that.
Yeah. Uh, good evening, uh, I'm here tonight to ask for your approval to extend our, uh, relationship with the William D. Ford, uh, Technical Center Fire Academy, uh, vocational academy, uh, vocational program. Um, this very important program helps high school students, uh, through a vocational system, uh, where they spend half their, their school day learning about Fire Academy, firefighting one and two, uh, and possibly their EMT license, uh, depending on when they start the program. The program does start in ninth grade, but we have to find, uh, young, uh, young adults who are interested at that level. Uh, the program currently ha- has between twelve to eighteen students in it, uh, and has over the past few years. Um, the students that attend this, uh, program get high school credit. They can earn their certificates, and they also earn college credits. So, when they leave high school, they already have some form of credits, uh, moving through college.
So, through the chair, if they start with, in their freshman year, they go all four years, they'll have Fire One, Fire Two, and EMT?
EMT, um, plus sixty college credits.
Wow.
So, but it's a hard, it, it is a hard program, uh, to make that decision as a ninth grader coming in. Um, so, they have a lot of their students starting tenth and then eleventh and twelfth grade when they're starting to really look at what they're gonna do for the rest of their lives and looking for a career. That's kinda when they start, so, um, it's a great program, um, and it gives our, our Allen Park students, and actually, it's for any student in Wayne County, um, besides Detroit, they have their own program. But any student in Wayne County can go to this program, and it's free of charge through the, uh, Michigan Public Schools.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, resolution is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Resolution six is to waive the city bid process. APCO two dash eight twenty-four, Ezra dash four, Ezra is no economic advantage and approve the purchase and installation of pump station monitoring and control equipment in the amount of fifty-two thousand, six hundred and seventeen dollars and forty-six cents to Kennedy Industries with funds from account five nine two, five forty-five, nine eighty-six, triple zero. Motion.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Lloyd.
Second.
Second by Mr. Barr. He gets his turn. Mr. Filipski?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Yes, this item is, um, to add on to what's been progressively, uh, we've been doing upgrades to our pumping stations for the sanitary and stormwater system. These ones in particular have dial, old, old-fashioned dialers in them that have limited functionality for our crews when they're responding to alarms. Um, and so, this would upgrade those to more cell, uh, cell-based, uh, dialers, and also provide the, uh, option to have some, some bit of control remotely, uh, and more detailed monitoring information. Um, in addition to that, we also, as part of this proposal, would replace some of the float systems that we have. As you know, we have some issues with grease, um, that has caused the mechanical float system to require a lot of additional maintenance and oversight by the crews. So, this would use a radar system, uh, that's just considerably more reliable. So, this would be keeping up with the, uh, progressive upgrades that we've been doing to our system.
Anyone have any questions? Sounds like we're getting a lot for our money, uh, with these upgrades.
Yes, yeah, we are, a lot of, um...
And a better impact downstream.
That's right.
I have a serious question, and stuff like that available in a small, like, household? Because my, I'm serious, that's amazing technology we're there.
I don't know if radar is, but there are ways to, to monitor sewer backup stuff in homes, yes.
Good to know, we'll have that on the next agenda.
I've had water in my basement.
Are there any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we move on to other business, and this evening, um, we will have the first and second readings of an ordinance. May I have a motion for the first and second readings of an ordinance of the City of Allen Park, zero five dash twenty twenty-five?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Nick.
Second.
Second by...
I'll take it.
Ms., Mr. Valerius. Feel like I'm at an auction. Um, are there any questions?
Well, I can, I'll take a moment. So, the, uh, some developers, uh, what I'll call the hill, um, they asked the planning commission for an amendment to the zoning ordinance, which would enable them to install a, uh, car wash up there. But they're subject to some requirements, and, uh, that's what the zoning, this ordinance is. It would permit that use in that district.
So, this, just to be clear, this went before the zoning board of appeals?
Uh, planning commission.
The planning, and this is their recommendation?
Correct.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, you'll have the first and second reading.
Okay, uh... I'll do it, Joe, if you want.
No, no, I, I'm happy to. Do you have an ordinance number or not yet?
Yeah.
Oh, I apologize.
Twenty twenty-five.
Oh, no worries. Didn't put it on, it's, if you read it, it's oh five dash, oh five dash two thousand twenty-five.
Oh, okay, good.
Uh, first reading of proposed ordinance oh five dash two zero two five. An ordinance of City of Allen Park, Code of Ordinances, amending chapter fifty-two zoning, article three, district regulations by the repeal and re-adoption of sections fifty-two dash four nineteen through fifty-two dash four four six to allow for motor vehicle wash establishments as a regulated use in the C six A Fairland Green District. Second reading of proposed ordinance, oh five dash two zero two five. An ordinance of the City of Allen Park, Code of Ordinances, amending chapter fifty-two zoning, article three, district regulations by the repeal and re-adoption of sections fifty-two dash four nineteen through fifty-two dash four four six to allow for motor vehicle wash establishments as a regulated use in the C six A Fairland Green District. Thank you.
Thank you. And because we will be going to close session, we will now have, um, closing comments. And we will start with Ms. Jastheimer.
Thank you very much. Uh, had to kinda rewrite some of my notes based on the outcome here. Um, I do wanna take just a moment and speak directly to the citizens, uh, and the residents regarding what happened with that, uh, vote that happened tonight, it got a little crazy. Um, I am proud to serve as your treasurer. Uh, I've, I've given my all to this position, uh, to this role for the past year and a half, uh, despite being asked to do it, uh, without the resources, support, and staff that the charter anticipates. Uh, I tried to rectify that, and now we, we have more, more delays, but it does sound productive. Um, the bottom line is, is that I cannot continue to work, uh, these unpaid hours with zero help for twenty-five to forty hours a week. Um, the fact is, um, that I've secured full-time... The fact is that I've secured full-time employment elsewhere, and I start on September 8th. And therefore, I'll continue to work for now, based on the hours this office was structured and funded for. But many of those hours will not be during normal business hours, as I have a full-time job that will be taking that time, so it will be more like nights and weekends. So this will leave the office without a treasurer during regular business hours. Maybe now you understand the urgency. I tried to negate that gap in service and protect the city and ensure residents were represented, but tonight you made it clear, and I agree on some of your points. But it's obvious that that isn't going to happen for at least anytime soon. By delaying, I worry, who will train a new deputy if the person that I put forward doesn't get the job? Who's going to take that responsibility? And, you know, we talked about, you know, alternative process, you know, where I don't even get to choose the person that would be representing me, which seems completely, nothing I've ever heard before with a political appointment. Generally speaking, you would select the person that best represents you and that speaks for you. Unfortunately, those types of trainings will have to be done outside of me if it's somebody that's new, due to that current work schedule. I just can't do it. Tonight, I brought you a highly qualified candidate who has effectively done the job for three years, someone who I trust to serve and speak on my behalf, someone who's currently acting as the head clerk. She works solo most of the time, she trains new employees and helps onboard them. She does a lot of work on the side when asked, outside of her current role. And even when not asked, she's a go-getter. She works solo most of the time, like I said, and she still manages to find time to get these duties done. And I really, really, really appreciate her. She's been trained on every single aspect of the duties that I detailed in the draft job description, and I continue to support her 100%. If there's certain things that certain people may not like about her, then that's not taken into my consideration. I have a sightline directly to these clerks that I see work daily. I'm involved in all their conversations, I overhear all their interactions with customers, and we all get frustrated from time to time, but I stand by my support of this specific individual. But I promise you for now, I'll continue to work as hard as I can with the part-time status and limited resources I have in the timeframe budgeted. But I want residents to understand that this decision, by not doing this right away, will hurt the office's ability to deliver the service and accountability that you've come to expect and frankly, that you deserve. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mizzi.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think, because here in Allen Park, there is a huge push for collusion, and let's do this for the city, for the city, for the city. But I don't mean to sound rude, but I will do what's best for the city every single time, but I'm charged with the clerk's office, okay? He's charged with the treasurer's office. We are department heads, okay? Entrusted by you people to watch over what's going on by these people. Whether they like it or not, like Tim or I, it doesn't matter, none of it matters. You've got a strong enough treasurer to stand up for his, what he thinks is right for the citizens, and you have a clerk that I will always, always be honest and forthright and follow the charter. Because in 30 years, I've seen, again, dozens and dozens of these people come and go, okay? I see thousands and thousands of citizens come and go. But whether it's an individual like Ray, who's, again, what I call the last of the Mohicans. There used to be a dozen people like Ray, watching every single move that this government did. Oh, man, it was fun to watch for 20 years. And then there was a lack of interest. And then the studio happened because no one was, and I don't mean to bring that up, but no matter how it's going, it could change like that. And what you need is someone constant. Unfortunately, whether they're good or bad, in eight years, they'll come and go. There are no term limits on that position or this position. I'll be in my deathbed before I give this up, to be honest. Unless they vote me out, because I learn, whether these like me, they like me, whether you like me, I'll always do what's right for this city and its citizens. With that, thank you all for coming out. God bless you, good night, God bless you, Tim.
Thank you. Mr. Wirtzblacher.
Well, I'm going to shift gears here. And the murals at Alexander's Cleaners and the ones that are being painted on the side of Sinorama look great. I mean, they're a real true asset to the community. Community's coming upward, we're moving away from that 60s look downtown to the current day. Also, congratulations and a warm welcome to the three new businesses who have chosen Allen Park to open up a business in and have recently had their ribbon-cutting ceremonies. Dr. Beard Barber Shop on Ekor's Road, Park Avenue Realty on South Allen Road, and the latest one, Custard on the Avenue on Park Avenue. All of them are going to be a true great asset to our community, and I think everybody needs to give them a good, warm welcome. And like Councilman Blevins used to say, patronize our small businesses because they are the heart and soul of the community. Labor Day weekend, last big barbecue. College and pro football all taking off on Friday and through the weekend and everything. If you are planning on, if you are planning on any of these events and you're going to be drinking, please don't drive. And as a public service, I did some research here. AAA again is offering its free tow-to-go from 6:00 PM this coming Friday, August 29th, through 6:00 AM Tuesday, September 2nd, for the Labor Day weekend. This service offers a free ride for one person and a free tow for their vehicle within a 10-mile radius. This offer includes non-members as well. Have a fun and safe holiday weekend.
Thank you.
With that, I yield.
Thank you. Ms. Nick.
So, Smith, I was thinking about you today, because it's National Dog Day. I know you've been working on the dog park. Also, if your name is Kelly, today is your special day, it's National Kelly Day. So Rams Horn, since we're talking about different businesses, I was over there and I picked up this flyer. It's a Rams Horn flyer, and they are celebrating an anniversary. So Colleen, who now owns the Rams Horn, she's been there seven years. And on Saturday, September 6th, from 6:00 to 8:00, they were having burgers and fries for only $3.99. And they're having an Elvis impersonator, they're having balloon artists, face painting, prizes, they're giving away whole pies. So if you're around, that's September 6th over at the Rams Horn. So, and then Maiden Michigan is coming up too. I think that, can't remember the exact dates, but I think it's 12th and 13th. Thank you, Mayor. So with that, I yield.
Thank you. I'm glad you brought that up. I kept wanting to make Michigan a different weekend, but I had to get it in my mind. Mr. Valerius.
I just wanted to thank Officer Batko again for joining the police department. And I wanted to thank everyone for coming out tonight and witnessing city government at its finest. As Mr. McGusson noted, we shouldn't be ashamed of inspired conversation and debate, nor should we be avoiding it. As representatives of all citizens of Allen Park, we owe it to them to engage in these sometimes difficult conversations. We may not always agree, nor should we be expected to always agree, but respect should be given to all and expected by all. I'm not going to sit up here and apologize for my questions and concerns regarding any issues. I was elected to voice those concerns and raise those questions. Tim, you know, I've said this before, I have the utmost respect for you and appreciate your hard work and efforts as our treasurer. I think we all voiced the fact that no one's in disagreement that the officer of treasure needs help, and it's my hope, and I'm sure it's council's hope, that we're going to give you that help. So again, and that's what the office of the treasurer needs, deserves, and also what the citizens deserve from not only your office, but us as council as well. And with that, I yield.
Thank you. Mr. Barr.
I concur with everything that's been said. Since the last meeting, I've attended the Downriver Utility Wastewater Authority meeting over in Taylor with the mayor. Yes, our sanitary water is getting cleaned. However, please do not flush the flushable toilets down the system. The pumps and the pipes cannot handle them, they're not biodegradable. As of yesterday, I went to the SEMCOG meeting up in Marysville Freshwater Treatment Center because they installed an early detection system for contaminants for water coming into the plant. We've had it in the past, or they've had it in the past, where it took 15 minutes for whatever contaminant to get into the water system. Now it's one minute. So it's been an update, it's an upgrade, update. And it's slowly going to be implemented into most of the 13 plants that bring in fresh water. It is from Marysville all the way down to Monroe. So 15 minutes, if a contaminant gets in from the whatever freshwater lake or stream, it will get into the drinking water. And at that point, it's a major feat to clean the system. So one minute is a lot better than what it was. Thank you, Ray, for coming up. Your inspiration is insurmountable. Other than that, have a great Labor Day, and I yield.
Thank you. Mr. Schleck.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, to say this council meeting has been interesting would definitely be 100% true. And I've heard things repeatedly, we've all talked about these, and I heard the word "respect." I'll do respect. I've heard variations of that, talking about our positions, obviously treasurer position, what roles council plays and committees, subcommittees. And it really led, leads me to believe, is something that I've talked about since I very first got on in 2019. And I think now is the time, more than ever, to really, truly talk about rules and procedures. It's clear that we need rules and procedures. I mean, we did not, we acted as a civil body, but we could act more civil. And if we had these rules and procedures in place, we would not have, I feel, the issues that presented themselves today. You know, these rules and procedures that I want to present, or that would be, you know, they would be for the good of the community, the good of the council, the good of future councils. At least, let's discuss them and look at them. And let's look at the respect that we give each other, look at the respect of our council members. And look at the respect of the mayor that we approved today, or more formally, as a member of council. Then let's make sure that what council members want something put on the agenda, let's not ever say, oh, can't do that. Let's make it happen. Because if council members have something they want to put on the agenda, let's do that. Let's have the respect of the clerk and the treasurer that do their job for this community, just like we do for the community, and give them the respect they deserve. And that's when I looked and why I supported Resolution One today, when we look at the treasurer's position. Because I look at what we see for our taxpayers. I think that's important to always look at that. Because I said, as I said at the beginning, we are stewards of our charter, we are stewards of those tax dollars and how we spend those. And I think that's important to look at and look at that. And that's why I've been open and fought for transparency, why I was openly and wanted, as Mr. McGusson said time and time again, about five minutes of why he wanted. He made his argument time and time again, and finally I said, well, let's discuss it. And lo and behold, we made that determination. And since then, I think Mr. McGusson has been the only one to use it multiple times, but I think there's been other times that it has been used. At the end of the day, if our citizens want that form to give us, honestly, we need to do that, provide that transparency, and look at what we can provide. So let's do ourselves the other justice, like I said. And again, I said it already, and I'll say it again, rules and procedures. We need to look at those. Let's switch gears briefly, and I want to say, for all the students that are starting a new year, for teachers that serve on this council, may they have a great year and provide the great education that they will. I want to hope the best for our Detroit Lions and all the collegiate teams that are there. I'm going to say, go Spartans, as I'm a Spartan, but anyone and any team. And our Tigers, Detroit Tigers, let's see what the best they can do. And finally, I want to wish everyone a safe, enjoyable Labor Day. And remember that when you are out at the grill, remember to honor the dignity and the hard work of these contributions, of these hard-working men and women. That when we look at the 40-hour work week, we look at the benefits that were provided. Don't dismiss that, don't just think you're at the grill for no reason. And I'll close with the words of President John F. Kennedy. A rising tide lifts all boats. I yield.
Thank you. Mr. Lloyd.
First, I want to thank everyone for their comments, particularly Councilman Valerius, because I was struggling with exactly, know what I wanted to say, but how to say it, and framed it very beautifully regarding today's vote. And, you know, this is how the sausage gets made, and it's been commented that, you know, yeah, I'm sure that this will definitely, maybe our YouTube views will go up for this particular meeting. It'll definitely be one of our more interesting ones, that is certain. But it is the important work of this council to have uncomfortable conversations and to do uncomfortable things. And I'll tell you this, and I've said it since I've been on council. And I continue to say it, it's something that I teach in my class. Government moves slow by design. It's not a flaw in government, it's a feature. And the reason that we do that, like, is it's frustrating. We've been talking about a dog park in Allen Park, again, as long as I've been up here. And we are inching towards that goal. Clearly, there are times when things are more pertinent, and they need to move faster than the span of years. But things have to go slowly so that we make sure that we are, as Councilman Schleck and Councilman Valerius pointed out, we are serving our constituents and doing the job that we were elected to do. And I know that everybody up here that raised their hand and was sworn in, is, just as Clerk Mizzi said, is doing their best to serve those constituents and uphold that. I was reminded of an Abraham Lincoln quote today. "I may walk slowly, but I never walk back." And I think that that is an absolutely crucial thing to remember, especially when we're spending taxpayer dollars. It's important that we remember that we get it right so that we don't have to go back and do it a second time, or fix it, or try to remake something. So again, I appreciate the honest conversations up here. I know that it can be uncomfortable, and I know that this is certainly not my favorite part of the job. Certainly not my favorite part of the job. It's hard to say what my favorite part of the job is, but that's definitely not it. So I very much appreciate everyone up here. I appreciate, I appreciate everybody, as was alluded in public comments- I appreciate, I appreciate everybody, as was alluded in public comments today, that puts their name in the ring and puts work towards public service. Because somebody has to do this work. This work has to be done, and so I have the utmost respect, the utmost respect for anybody that is willing to give their time, energy, and talent to serve their community, their state, their country. And so everybody up here, again, Councilman Valerius said it, we will not all agree, and we are going to say things that are going to upset each other. I hope that we can walk away knowing that everybody here is acting in the best interest of the city. Or at least in what they view to be the best interest of the city. I truly believe that. I truly believe that, and it's something that I remain constant in my entire tenure. So I appreciate everyone up here, from the bottom of my heart. It's a pleasure to serve with every single one of you. Again, switching gears, I know it's already been mentioned, but I got to say it as well. The city looks amazing, and I want to give a big shout-out to the DDA because they have been living up to their mandate. For those of you that don't know, and to Mr. McGusson's point, that is, the DDA is set up to capture funds, tax revenue, from our downtown area, and that money is to be reinvested to make that a great place to start a business, to go and spend your money, to just plain, like, go-to, and the DDA has done a wonderful job at that. The custard shop looks amazing, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, was that Flowers on the Avenue? Okay, and that was a property that was purchased by the DDA and very much, like, that was a strategic choice that they made. The old cleaners, don't know what that's going to be yet, I wish that I had an insight because it looks amazing, whatever it's going to be, it looks great, the murals look awesome. We are taking steps to make, I'm just going to go ahead and, we'll change this later, Allen Park Commons, all right, the former site of the Dollar Show, we're making steps to make that a great place. And I walked down there, I live on Astor with my wife and my son, and we walked down Park Avenue, it was a beautiful day, we got some custard, we were able to watch as, watch as the mural was painted, and it was just, I told my wife, and I, this is, I mean, it's obviously always been true, but it's like, man, this is a city that I want to live in. It's always been that way. Obviously, like, you know, you have your hometown affection for it, but it's becoming more than just like, oh, this is my city. It's a beautiful city that has awesome things happening. And that's due to our taxpayers, it's due to the hard work that has been put in by our city employees and the DDA and everybody. It's been amazing to watch the transformation. And I, you know, I happen to be a coworker of Mr. Corey Schlesinger, so it was cool to see him featured in the one at the cleaners. It looks awesome, a lot of positive news stories about Allen Park, so just, you know, very happy to see it. And I, just once more, I know I've mentioned it before, with all the art going up, I can't help but think of Councilwoman Psych because that was her big thing, and she mentioned it over and over again. So when I saw him painting out there today on my way to council meeting today, I thought of Pam, and I know that she's smiling down on it. She'd be very happy to see that. So hopefully, we continue that, and I know that we will. So, yeah, it's a great day to be in Allen Park. Thank you. I yield.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm glad you mentioned, I don't think I've seen as much excitement around Allen Park in quite some time, and those murals are really having a major, major impact. As are a lot of our new businesses, which is really great to see. But I'll tell you, my desire to lose weight is going to fight a losing battle with that custard shop. I don't know if I can handle that. Really quick, I want to remind people, I know it's all posted all over, but we have a shred and styrofoam collection day coming up on Saturday, October 11th, from 9:00 AM to noon. It will be in the parking lot next to Bob Seeger Boulevard, behind the Prestige. Again, Saturday, October 11th, from 9:00 AM to 12:00, shred and styrofoam collection, something very near and dear to my heart. I'm going to try and make this brief, something popped up when I was cruising around the internet, and today, August 26th...
We're excited about this.
I know.
I've got so much in my garage.
I know, I know. Don't forget. That's why I mention it again, because a lot of people have been saying. Today, August 26th, is Women's Equality Day. What I pulled up was to reflect on over a century of progress since the 19th Amendment. And then the next words kind of struck me. Granted some women in the United States the right to vote in 1920. And that made me curious, because you read a lot of other articles, and it says Women's Equality Day. This is, the 19th Amendment gave women the right to vote in the United States. But this said "some." And I want you to pay attention to this because it's very important. I Googled what women weren't covered by Women's Equality Day. The 19th Amendment outlawed gender-based voting discrimination, but discriminatory state laws and systemic racism continued to prevent many women of color from voting for decades. And under women of color, we had, of course, black women, who were faced with the same Jim Crow-era voter suppression tactics used against black men. The next one was very interesting, indigenous women. They were not considered U.S. citizens, the ones that we took this land from. The Indian Citizenship Act of 1924 granted citizenship to Native Americans, but many states continued to disenfranchise them through discriminatory laws. Some indigenous women were not able to vote until as late as 1957 in states like Utah and Nevada. Even after 1924, many states continued to use tactics like literacy tests and claims about reservation residency to block their votes. Asian-American and Pacific Islander women. The Chinese Exclusion Act of 1882 effectively prohibited Chinese immigrants from becoming naturalized citizens until it was repealed in 1943. It was not until the Immigration and Nationality Act of 1952 that race was eliminated as a barrier to citizenship. Latinas, particularly in the Southwest, faced voter discrimination through methods like English-only literacy tests, white primaries, which excluded them from participating in Democratic primary elections. Full protections for Latina voters were not in place until the 1965 Voting Rights Act was extended in 1975 to require multilingual election materials. And others excluded were incarcerated and formerly incarcerated, trans and non-binary, and women with disabilities. Pay attention to that. Give it some thought. Things keep changing. Be careful. But I did see something that was posted from Maya Angelou, and this will hold true, I think. It's a quote. "I am grateful to be a woman. I must have done something great in another life." And with that, I will ask for a motion to convene into a closed session for the purpose of pending litigation. Motion, please. Motion by Mr. Lloyd. Second by Ms. Nick. We will have a roll call vote.
Hello. I have a motion by Mr. Lloyd, or Mr. Lloyd, Councilman Lloyd, supported by Councilwoman Nick, to convene into a closed session for the purpose of pending litigation with VDG, Monroe LLC, and Skilken Gold LLC, and Jacqueline McMasters at all, Wayne County versus Wayne County, Taylor, Lincoln Park, Allen Park, Ecorse, Redford, Dearborn Heights, Harper Woods, Garden City, Dearborn, Flat Rock, as permitted by MCL 15.268E. Shall we convene? Councilman Barr?
Yea.
Councilwoman Nick?
Yes.
Councilman Lloyd?
Yes.
Mayor McLeod?
Yes.
Councilman Schlack?
Yes.
Councilman Valerius?
Yes.
And Councilman Wordspacher.
Yes.
The yeses have it, we shall convene.
Thank you.